All right. Good morning, everybody. I am pleased to call to order the December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners to note the presence of all three commissioners. And I'm going to ask Mary Pugh to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Religious Lands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so start with this. A few opening comments this morning. As winter sets in, the county has begun activating our annual Code Blue emergency plan. In periods of extreme, life-threatening weather, defined as a wind chill factor of twenty degrees Fahrenheit or below, multiple county agencies and private health and social organizations offer expanded services for those without adequate shelter. This includes the chronically homeless and homeless families with children. The goal of the Code Blue plan is to provide temporary shelter, food, and clothing to those in need. More people in our county are facing homelessness due to rising rents, lack of affordable housing, and the ongoing impacts of Hurricane Ida. We have temporary Code Blue shelters located in Norristown, Pottstown, and Lansdale that are available to house our residents. We also have provided additional funds for partner organizations to hotel residents during a Code Blue this season. There are many partners that help to care for our most vulnerable residents during a Code Blue. I want to thank all of our partners that continue to step up and support these shelter operations. These include Access Services, the Salvation Army, Pottstown Warming Center through Beacon of Hope and St. Paul's Church, Norristown Area School District, Norristown Hospitality Center, IKEA, Collegeville Bakery, and our county staff that include the Office of Housing and Community Development, Security, Public Safety, Public Property, and our Health and Human Services staff. And I also want to give just a special thanks to our deputy COO, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, who has just done an incredible amount of work in this last month, helping to secure appropriate Code Blue shelters for so many of our residents. So, thank you, Barbara. There are many county residents that also volunteer and help with staffing, food, donating personal items, and more to those in need. We are bringing this up today because we continue to seek additional partners willing to temporarily house our most vulnerable residents during Code Blue conditions throughout all parts of the county. As Commissioner Lawrence and I have said many, many times, housing insecurity is present in every community in our county, and this is not a problem of one community or another. And it will take every municipality pulling together to provide just their share of help so that we can solve this problem. The county is always willing to provide the resources and technical assistance to create a temporary Code Blue shelter. So, please, if you have any interest in understanding what's involved, we will do everything we can to provide you with the information that you need and make this as easy as possible. For all of you watching, there are a couple of things that you can do during a Code Blue situation. First, check on elderly friends and neighbors frequently to ensure that their homes are adequately heated. If you see someone in immediate need of assistance, call or text 911. If you or someone you know needs help with temporary shelter from the cold weather or a longer-term housing issue, you can call Your Way Home at 211 or text them at 898-211. And today is the last Commissioners' Board meeting of two thousand twenty-two. I want to take a moment to thank our employees for everything that you have done this year. The past couple of years have been difficult for all of us in different ways, especially as our communities continue to recover from the impacts of COVID-19 and the impacts of Hurricane Ida. The holidays are a time to reflect on our good fortune, celebrate time-honored traditions that bring loved ones together and our communities together, and reach out and help folks all across our community. Whether or not you celebrate a particular holiday, we hope that you and your family have a wonderful holiday season. And with that, I'll turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I just want to remind everyone that our Office of Health and Human Services is still running holiday drives for gifts, gift cards, and winter coats. They are continuing to collect food, clothing, and other items for our residents in need so that they can stay healthy and warm this winter. And for more information, you can visit www.montco PA dot org slash HHS donations. And in addition, Your Way Home, informed by their newly-formed Lived Experience Advisory Team, has created an Amazon wishlist of survival items that would be helpful for unhoused individuals and families to get through the harsh winter weather. The list includes waterproof dry backpacks, insulated water bottles, and rain ponchos and umbrellas. This wishlist will be open until January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. There is also an opportunity to give monetary donations for the Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Fund, which helps support housing costs beyond government funding. The links to the wishlist and monetary donations are located on the Your Way Home website at www.yourwayhome.org. And if you are able and can consider giving a gift this year, we thank you in advance for your support for our residents in need.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to a very special introduction this morning, and I'm going to ask Mary Pugh to do that.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mary Pugh, and I'm Executive Director of Montgomery Child Advocacy Project, otherwise known as MCAP. MCAP's mission is to end child abuse and neglect in Montgomery County through legal services, advocacy, and education. We work with stakeholders throughout the county, law enforcement, schools, physicians, county social workers, judges, anyone who is involved in a child's life, to help them heal through the horrific trauma of child abuse. Since two thousand four, we have helped over nine thousand children in Montgomery County. By the end of this year, we are on track to represent over seven hundred children. I'm happy to introduce to you our newest staff member. Her name is Nutmeg. Through our grant and through appropriations through the county, thank you, we've been able to obtain Nutmeg through a nonprofit agency. She is a comfort dog who is trained in trauma therapy and comfort to those who need comfort, whether through horrific events or just through daily events. She can come up and say hi to you? While she's wearing her vest, she is on duty. She is still a puppy. She'll be one years old in January. But her purpose is really to give comfort, although she lives with us at the nonprofit. Mary Anders, here, our Deputy Director, is her primary handler, and we are secondary handlers on staff. But her goal is to give comfort. When we represent children who are abused or vulnerable, they need comfort in all of its forms, and as do all of we who help them and who experience their trauma virtually. So, I welcome all county employees, anyone related to county, or anyone related into the work we do, to reach out to us if you feel that you need comfort in any way. We are available, Mary is available, to have the dog, our little Nutmeg, come to you, or one of the other handlers. She's already begun work. She started with us December second, but yesterday she participated in a child interview with one of the judges. The child's going through severe trauma from family members who are pulling this child in both directions and is suffering from severe anxiety because of that. The thought of talking to a judge was overwhelming, yet with comfort. And with Nutmeg by her side, she was able to talk and to tell the story and to reveal her feelings in a safe place. So, if ever, whether it's your staff, whether it's something going on in your offices, you feel like Nutmeg can give you levity and some comfort, call us, because we all do need that comfort, whether it's from the daily traumas that we deal with or whether it's just from our day-to-day living. And with that, any questions?
Well, thank you so much for bringing Nutmeg over. I got to meet Nutmeg at the beginning of the week and said, oh, we have to bring her to our meeting.
Yes.
I think many county employees remember Turks. Turks retired, and we've definitely had sort of a bit of a hole there since Turks retired. And so, I'm just so happy to meet Nutmeg. And thank you, and Mary, thank you so much for taking care of Nutmeg. She's living with you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
As our primary handler as well.
Yeah, right, so that's great. And I understand everyone in your office has been trained with the proper commands and everything to work with Nutmeg, so we just really appreciate it, yeah. And what's the best way to reach you all if somebody...
So, just call our offices at MCAP, we're on the website, or just call directly and say that you'd like to use her. We are available to anyone, not just those with whom we work. I have to say that her training has already come into play. We've kind of done a little bit of a circuit the past few weeks, introducing her to county employees, to Walmart employees, and she has sensed some trauma with people and gone over to them to give them a little bit of an extra attention. And some of the employees said, how would she know that this is? So, she is well-trained and available to all of us. So, take comfort and enjoy Nutmeg and reach out to us, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Is she a labradoodle?
She is a golden doodle.
Golden doodle, okay. Looks a lot like an elaborate.
Yes.
Thank you both and your entire team for all you do to help children and help them heal during difficult times.
Well, thank you for your support. We could not do it without county support. We are an independent nonprofit, but we do lean on our stakeholders, and we consider you an amazing stakeholder, so thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go if I may be...
Yes, yes, of course. Yes, absolutely. All right.
William Nutmeg, Mary, yeah, you just wanted to...
Yeah, you can go, leave Nutmeg, yeah. All right, we will move... Oh, that's such a cute photo. We will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Mr. Stein, would you please review the rules?
Absolutely. All speakers should sign into the meeting sheet available in the back of the room or virtually, as indicated by Ms. Co. Francisco. All speakers should come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. Those seeking to speak during the time set aside for public comments on items appearing on the agenda must state the specific agenda items they wish to address. Those seeking to speak during the time set aside for general public comments must identify the subject matter they wish to address. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the Commissioners for consideration or which may come before the Commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether matters germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor.
Objection.
Please state the nature of your objection.
What you just read does not apply to general, because agenda is what's planned and what they're going to vote on, but general can be anything that's germane, and germane to the county means that it's specific to the county, which also includes the Commissioners.
That is incorrect, but thank you very much for your objection.
It's actually not incorrect.
That's not incorrect. What she just said is, in fact, correct to record. Second.
A time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The Board is not required to respond to public comments. Please state the nature of your objection.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Contra Hocken, Springfield. Objection on the record for the two minutes. Someone that doesn't go in front of the public a lot cannot make a meaningful comment.
We understand the nature of your objection is to the time limit. We're going to move on.
They can't make a meaningful comment, and if you can't make a meaningful comment, then while we're here...
You've made your objection. Thank you. The Board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting.
Second objection laid upon the table.
Very good. It's not required to respond to, sorry, not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so that publicers mind that this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The Board Chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling from the seats, arguing whether a matter is germane to county business once the solicitor has demanded determination on such, or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down, shall be grounds for removal or muting from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. Please state the nature of your objection.
You just, that actually is in violation of the Constitution when you're saying no one can explain why it is germane when you think it isn't. And actually, I brought that up a couple of years ago, and you took that part out. You change this so often without the approval. The only time you did that was when you wanted everybody to do sit down.
Commissioners always welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedback. Commissioners at Monaco PA...
You're very rude.
Thank you.
All right, we'll start with public comments appearing on the agenda. Ms. Co. Francisco?
Sure, we have Linda Smith, who has Agenda Item Comment on Section H, the budget.
Good morning. My name is Linda Smith. I'm from Upper Gwinnett, and I'm also an Upper Gwinnett Committee person. I've been asked by residents in my district, what is the need for the eight percent tax increase implemented by Montgomery County? And they're outraged about it. I understand that you don't answer any questions, so I'm just going to have to tell them what I think, if I can't get an answer from you about it. But they're outraged about this decision because they understand that this is a tax and spend, is a typical liberal political leadership decision. I just actually came across something this morning, and according to the Federal Reserve, seven trillion dollars in personal wealth in America has been lost in the first three quarters of this year. Bank accounts are shrinking, home values are shrinking. Inflation is taking away any type of investment opportunities we would have with our discretionary income. Worse, decline since the Great Depression. This reflects terribly on the Biden economy. Real wages, according to Fortune Magazine, are down three percent. Next year, U.S. home prices projected to fall four percent. Home sales are going to be down sixteen percent. So, the majority of this board has dismissed the objections of Joe Gale when it comes to this issue. And no matter what you say about Joe, he did not support the spending on the courthouse and does not support this tax increase. This courthouse, this area is beautiful, but I have people in my district that can't afford a turkey for Thanksgiving, and they're going to have to pay eight percent more with their taxes. So, I have a couple of questions that I assume you're not going to answer, but I am just going to ask them anyway for the record. What is driving this tax increase with people struggling in this inflationary Biden economy? Is it the raises for the employees? Is it the courthouse? Is it other spending that we know nothing about in Montgomery County? And what is the need for the expanded courthouse? Was it really worth increasing our taxes eight percent?
Ms. Smith, your two minutes are up.
I have the objection, second to the objection. She's allowed to finish her final has.
I have two minutes. I have five. Oh, I have five minutes at township, but I'm, I've got two minutes. Maybe this will wake up the voters now that the consequences of this board's decision are a reality. Thank you.
Ma'am, Mr. Docton will be happy to make sure you have the information behind the budget. There's been a number of public sessions on the issues behind the budget. So, Mr. Docton, our Chief Financial Officer, can make sure that you have the links. You can watch the presentations. All that information is publicly out there, okay? Sure, yeah, thank you. Next?
Next, we have Pauline Braccio with Agenda Item Comment on Item Number H, the Budget.
I would echo everything the previous speaker just said. Linda, right? I agree with everything she just said, and I think it is disgraceful that you increased the Sheriff's Department budget by, what, three percent? You increased the taxes for the people by eight percent, and you're taking a twelve percent increase for your salary? You know, don't you get enough kickbacks from whoever is building the courthouse? It's really disgraceful. You're greedy, and the other, the thing is that two weeks ago, when you had the budget meeting in the evening, had I known what the topic would be, I would have been here. So, yes, it was clandestine in a way, because it wasn't publicly stated that you were going to be increasing your salaries in the evening meeting, because I would have been here then. And the two of you were really outrageous, you know, really attacking Joe. Why would you be attacking him? He's doing something that's noble, and you two are just greedy, and then you're pinning him down like, oh, so you're not going to take it, so you're not going to take it. And you, Ken, who can't speak without a script in front of you, and obviously you didn't have a script in front of you, you were saying, oh, use your inside voice. Joe was not screaming. He wasn't being loud. He was being forceful and assertive, and then you said, oh, your outside voice again. And then you said, and the Oscar goes to, because you were saying he was dramatic. Well, you don't get an Oscar, because that was not an act. You're a buffoon, and you show that to us every single time you speak. The other thing is, you know, when you want to defund law enforcement, that's when the crime rate goes up, and that is what you're doing effectively. If you're raising the budget three percent, but you're taking a twelve percent, you're charging people eight percent, it's just unfathomable how you can actually go to sleep at night. You know, how many drugs do you take to go to sleep? You must need something, because, honey, you are drugged.
I do want to just clarify for those who are listening. The meeting to increase the salary of elected officials was properly advertised. It is required by state statute that that meeting is held in the evening between six and nine P.M. It is the state statute that we followed. And also, Ms. Braccio, I am not increasing my salary. It will not go into effect until two thousand twenty-four, should any of us be re-elected. Next, please.
Next, we have Giuseppe Monticelli for Agenda Item Comment on Items H and M.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Contra Hocken, and Springfield.
Where do you actually live? You often state municipalities. What is your residence? That's what we need for this purpose.
My voting residence is in Springfield.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to comment about H here. The budget, we have the Del Ricci Injustice Center that's being built. I object to that. We have funds going to these community behavioral health programs of, I think one of them was Christian, Bethany Christian Home Services. So, I'm going to have to object in total to H. M and number eight, contract award, we're going to get a brand-new district attorney vehicle for thirty-nine thousand dollars and a hundred and two. Okay, so what we have going on there is, why do we need to buy a vehicle? Obviously, that's a vehicle set alone. It's without the computer equipment. Question is, why do we need this new vehicle? I don't see any need for this. Is this transporting, let's say, victims per se with the district attorney's office? Is this transporting district attorney investigators? We always don't know. I'm going to have to object to M eight, and actually, I have O on there as well. We have Kelly Services. I'm not going to go too long into this, but geez, I really hope that eighty-four thousand is just not for one temp worker. I hope that's for, if someone's out, you get a temporary worker in to voter services. I really hope that's not for one temporary worker. I yield the floor back to you, Madam Doctor.
Next, please. Next, we have David Morgan with Agenda Item Comment on Item H.
Good morning.
Good morning. David Morgan from Ambler. I have a petition against the eight percent tax hike for two thousand twenty-three. It is signed by citizens who are not happy with the five percent two thousand twenty-one hike compounded with the eight percent two thousand twenty-two hike, then another eight percent proposed. Who likes twenty-one percent in three years? The adopted two thousand twenty-one budget for the county campus or Justice Center was fifty-one million dollars. On page three, I have that here. But in August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, you spent way past that amount by over a hundred eighty million dollars. I was so astonished to read in the minutes of that meeting, page nine, you spent the two hundred and thirty-two million. Think about that. It's more than half the entire projected four hundred fifteen million cost of the Justice Center. In the minutes, Mr. Gale called it reckless. If you operate that way, taxpayers need to be concerned, not just today, but every meeting you have. Thereby, you already have indebted the taxpayers. You should not be asking for a hundred and twenty-two million to spend on the county campus in two thousand twenty-three. You already overcharge the taxpayers a hundred and eighty million. No more bonds future generations must pay. Cut three or four floors out of the Justice Center to give us a tax cut and help the homeless. You are using this building for trials, this building here, Montgomery, and you have ample building space across the street. You should employ work-from-home strategies. Many of my friends like a three-day-a-week schedule, and they're home at three days. Use smart scheduling. Give us town halls and the community college, front page, and front page the Montgomery County website, update, so we know what is happening to our money each month. No eight percent tax hike. You already spent way more. Reduce debt. Cut our taxes. The people face inflation. Two hundred and three, two, this is Bucks County, total project.
Mr. Morgan, your two minutes are up.
That's one, one meeting, one meeting, one meeting in August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Next? Next, we have Karen Palora for Agenda Item H.
Good morning. I'm here to ask you politely to not consider the eight percent increase.
I'm sorry, could you just state your name?
My name is Karen Batoda, and I am a resident of East Norton, Pennsylvania. I'm also the founder of a baby's breath crisis pregnancy centers, and we have five centers. And one of our centers is in Jeffersonville. But one of our centers in Phoenixville provides housing for homeless moms. We have a total budget of two hundred and fifty thousand. We don't accept government money. We provide all of our services through volunteer leadership, including myself. I don't take a salary. So, the tax increase that you are proposing is going to be a tax for me, who I don't take any money for what I do. So, I don't understand why you can't think a little bit more outside the box. I see the people that are struggling, the homeless provisions are just not enough. They're at maximum capacity. The food shelters can't possibly provide the means of support. We have people that have been put out on the street because they can't afford their rent, because the increase in your taxes impacts not the landlord, but the people who are trying to get free housing. So, no matter how many free vouchers you're handing out, you're not going to have landlords that are going to take a hit when the client can't afford to meet the demands of the rent increase. So, think carefully about each and every dollar that you're spending like we do. So, I provide it, I'm going to provide a copy of my book, if any of you want to, you know, read it, on how to provide social services with volunteer leadership and volunteers. And I, you know, ask you to kindly consider not imposing another tax increase on the constituents that you're serving. That's it.
You can give the book to Ms. Washington. You can give it to Ms. Washington, right, Becky? Thank you.
Next, we have Joe Holman, who has Agenda Item Comment on Item H.
Good morning.
Good morning. Joe Holman, Springfield Township. Commissioners, at the last meeting for the public two thousand twenty-three budget was a presentation, a presentation on elected official salary. There was proposed a one-time increase of twelve percent for county road officers and yourselves. One of the slide's justifications for the proposed increase was to appropriately adjust elected official salaries to align with their peers. Reference was Bucks County. Bucks County has been referenced by members of collective bargaining units, and frankly, unrepresented employees know Bucks pays better, yet both are seeking the same alignment in pay. In addition, Dean Bruce Hayne of the Register of Wills commented about the need for competitive salaries to attract the best candidates for office and positions in the county. We agree. I fear a lack of peer alignment, which is so prevalent in our county, will continue to drive away superior candidates. I fear a strain on agencies like Corrections in the Sheriff's Office will continue to intensify. Currently, twenty-plus openings exist in Corrections, close to twenty openings in the Sheriff's Office alone. Without competitive wages, Corrections, as well as the Sheriff's Office, will be put in positions where questionable candidates will be, who would be normally turned down, may be considered. And OS four asked that I speak on her behalf. She works for the county for over two decades and has yet to reach a base salary of forty thousand, where her counterpart in Bucks County starts at fifty thousand. OSP fours and county employees in her situation are asking you to align them with their peers, just as you are doing for yourselves. Thank you.
Next, please. We'll move to virtual public comment. Again, we're still on agenda items. So, first, we'll go to Laura Layman, if you can unmute and just hit the agenda item.
Laura Layman, fourteen thirty-one Bryant Lane. I'm in Meadowbrook, Abington Township, and I'm speaking on the H budget item. I want to first say that I also agree, two minutes is ridiculously too short a time to properly explain anything. And then also, I want to understand why we're not seeing the faces of the people at the podium who are speaking. Has that now also been removed? And I would like to have questions answered, and I think everybody in this county wants to have questions answered. wants to have questions answered. So the law is supposed to be made in conjunction with the people who are bound by it. So please reconsider that. We need to have a government that works for us. We are in charge of overseeing what you do and voting you out if you don't do the right thing. And we can't do that if you withhold the tools that we need to do that. So please reconsider those things. Again, reiterating some of what was said earlier, that everyone in recent years has become aware of the inequality of wealth that is really a nationwide problem, a worldwide problem. But in our nation, it has become so detrimental that, you know, we nearly lost our democracy over it, and we have a lot of problems that are just because of the inequality of wealth. And in this particular budget, you have shown how the needs of the people are being put aside for, you know, a ridiculously expensive justice center. I, just trying to get a link to the meeting to send to some other people today. I had to sift through page after page after page. And I wrote to Kelly Pope Francisco to see if we could work together to fix that. Now, this would not be the first time I've offered to work together to fix things that people need.
Ms. Layman, your two minutes are up.
Objection.
Okay, next, please. Next, we'll go to Joseph Moore. You can unmute. And again, we're still on agenda items, so if you could just state the agenda item that you're making comment on.
Yes, warning. I'm not sure if you can see my video. Can you confirm that, please?
Video is disabled for public commenters.
Okay, thank you.
We can hear you.
Okay, at least that works. Thank you. My name is Joseph Moore. I'm commenting on Item H again. I know everyone's commenting on that. I am from New Hanover Township. Is there anything else you need me before I start speaking?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm currently a U.S. Marine. I am serving down in Washington, D.C. right now, away from my family. While I am down here, I have heard about, of course, the tax hike. So we own a home up in Montgomery County in New Hanover Township, and, you know, we pay our taxes just like everybody else. And finding out that there's an 8% tax hike in a county was extremely deflating. As I mentioned, you know, we own a home up there, and I commute down here whenever I have to for military duty. Commute elsewhere as well. And we've tried to maintain our home up there because, you know, we just love the area. I'm originally from Montgomery County. Such a drastic tax hike is extremely damaging to our intent to stay in the area, to our ability to be able to pay our bills, maintain schooling for our children, pay for gas or oil heat, which have both risen dramatically over this administration. And so I know that there are things in the county that need to be taken care of. I know there are salaries and wages that do need to increase, such as the Sheriff's Office. I understand that. But at the same time, an 8% tax hike is so extreme, so damaging, that there has got to be a way around it. I've heard of very expensive projects the county has endeavored on and, you know, various things that money is going to that probably could be skipped, probably could be rearranged. Trying to pay that 8% is going to be so difficult. Trying to fit that into our budget is going to be so difficult that I don't foresee us staying in Montgomery County much longer. My wife and I are already discussing at length moving to Berks County or relocating down to Virginia. I mean, it's going to be very difficult for us to justify staying in Montgomery County. And I implore the county commissioners to reconsider the 8% tax hike, reconsider some of the expenditures that have led to that 8% tax hike, such as the 12% pay raises across the board, and, you know, consider us and what we can manage to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Suzanne Stupanek, and we're still on Agenda Item Comment. So Suzanne, you can unmute and just state your agenda item.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Suzanne Stupanek, and that's S-U-Z-A-N-N-E. And I'm in Upper Southford Township, and I want to speak on Item H. Like everyone else, I can't believe that the tax increases 8%. You're giving yourselves a 12% increase in income, and you're giving the taxpayers an 8% decrease in income. Try being a retiree on a fixed income and handling all of this. You know, with the Biden administration policies, reducing the value of our retirement assets in the extreme? I mean, I can't tell you. This is really difficult. Your last speaker said they're considering moving? Yeah, I would like to consider that, too. But how can anybody afford that now, honestly? Try being a retiree. This is ridiculous, not to mention, you know, all of the things that we're tapped into and all these improvements that you want to make to the courthouse and all of these things. You know, you could save those for a time when we're more prosperous, not when, you know, the screws are being put to the taxpayers. And, you know, like another person that spoke said, "It's unfortunate you don't answer questions." I've tried submitting questions by email. I never get answers back. There's never any answers. It's like a fiefdom, you know? So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to general public comment now, back with folks in the room. So we will go to Pauline Braccio.
Pauline Braccio, Townes and Township. And even if that meeting was advertised, I'm talking about specifically, it was not, I didn't see it anywhere where you were going to talk about giving yourselves a raise. And did you give us a glimmer of hope? Maybe you're not going to be Commissioner after next year? That would be great. You could take him with you. Anyway, you know, you talk about the homeless, and I don't see you doing anything for the homeless. Didn't you just shut down another shelter on Norristown State Grounds a few years ago? Shapiro shut down Park House in Upper Providence, I think, or Lower. I forget which Providence it was. But anyway, you are closing down shelters. You're not helping people. You go out and then you count how many there are, and then you come back and talk about how cold it was when you were out there counting them and how warm you were in your car. Do you let any of them in your car to get warmed up for a while while you're there counting them? What do you do for them? Because you're, like I said, you're shutting down shelters. You're talking about every municipality should have low-income housing. But the county, you are supposed to be the top of the county, not a queen like you think you are, but you're supposed to be the leader. And you don't lead very well. And when you're giving yourselves, you know, even whether you're here or not, you're still giving yourselves a 12% raise. So when you lower everybody else's income by 8% and you give yourself a 12%, that's a 20% difference. That's a lot. You gave the Sheriff's Department 3%, and that's supposed to help them get their salaries competitive with other counties? Do you know how to do math? Does Dean know how to do math? You know, and the budget is constantly changing the format, so you can't follow from one year to another exactly what's going on? I don't know what school you went to. Did you used to work for the mafia to learn how to cook the books? Anyway, you really need to do better. This may be your last year, hopefully. But maybe on your way out, you could do something good. Yeah, and I object to that. Thanks.
Objection, second.
Next, please. Next, we have for general public comment, Giuseppe Monticelli.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Springfield, Contra Hocken. Talked about some real buffoonery in the evening for the December 1st meeting. Joe, obviously, you're using your inside voice. I would have been there at that evening meeting as well. But you're going to take your job, Doctor in Arisburg, that's waiting for you, Department of Health Secretary, allegedly. I want to talk about the Del Ritchie Injustice Center. What we have currently going on in the current Del Ritchie Injustice Center is people who are currently there for criminal cases, we're talking from 2020, '21, and even currently. What is going on is judges are backlogging these cases. Commissioners, you can go ahead and say to these judges, chop, chop. You need to have status conferences on each defendant here every 30 days. But that's not happening. People who don't live in the state that got caught up with criminal charges that may have to stick in the state and can't fly back and forth? Think about what that's doing to them, having a case handiover on them that they can get over in a good amount of time prior to COVID. We're over COVID now. Why is it that can't happen? That's what I want to know. Talk about some real buffoonery there. Are you deciding to prosecute people for freedom of speech versus a, someone that went out and robbed a store? Is the backlog that long? It's really a shame. I yield the floor back to you, Doctor. Congratulations on doing a new job.
I would just remind you that the judiciary is an independent branch of government, and I urge you to take those concerns to the President Judge, who is in the position to address them. The current President Judge is Judge Carolyn Corlechio, and it is her decisions, and she is the one that oversees the judiciary. We have no authority to direct a separate branch of government to conduct their business in a particular way.
Next, please. Next, we have for general public comment, David Morgan.
David Morgan of Ambler. My topic is compassion. Are your top priorities government buildings or the citizens of Montgomery County? Why not take these steps? Start with the youngest, the unborn children, and continue the successful birth outcome program of Monaco mamas. I missed seeing them again this November. Maybe we'll see them soon. Involve dads, too. Their responsibility. Help young people escape from the perils of fentanyl with education and opportunity. Reassign staff to help the DA office serve local police departments, as DA Steele mentioned in last year's budget meeting. That will help them with their load of serving. I think also, Mr. Ali Shabirani's Norristown Company Program is a great way to develop workers, and they'll be able to afford housing because they're working. The county is helping them out. That should be explored. With 10 bus lines and two train lines here in Norristown, you should build Main Street area, help that go for housing, because a lot of the townships don't have public transit. Western Montgomery County, how can people get around? Very well, except Pottstown, maybe. Ambler has done it. Use that building you brought on Erie Street next to this one for housing the homeless. What about the big empty bank building down the street? There's also another building, a jewelry building I saw. Could some of the 330, I'm sorry, 30 million in Ridge Pike and 29 million in Trail spending go to save lives by employing workers across the street and housing across there? Why spend on scenic trails or Justice Center steel while nearby people are shivering and suffering, and the taxpayers are poorer? Disgracemus, remember the compassion of Jesus who came for those who need help.
Amen.
Next, for in-person, we have Karen Patorda. Did you?
Yeah. So I didn't, Karen Batota, East Norton. I didn't get a chance to see this before coming, but I did some quick math while I was sitting there, and I noticed that Bethany Home Services is charging like $564 per client per day. And if I did the analysis on what we provide free, we are saving $2.4 million for the taxpayers. So it can be done. It's not impossible. You know, I do provide some training. The name of the book is Creating Compassionate Places, and you can purchase the book on our website, www.a babysbreath.org. And I've never, you know, come to you because we don't accept government money from anywhere, from the federal government, state government, county government. We just started 22 years ago. The outcome of Run for Life, we just blindly, I'm the founder, so I started an organization that grew to five centers, including a home, in 22 years. And we provide free pregnancy help to mothers, fathers, and families in a crisis pregnancy. And that includes counseling, classes, housing, as I mentioned, ultrasounds. And we've even developed a kind of a form of welfare where they earn actual dollars for achieving certain goals, like getting a job. They'll get a certain amount of money. So I just maybe am here to inform you that this is a possibility, and if you'd like to consider options that would facilitate some of these social needs, I'd be more than happy to come in and advise you on how to help more homeless people, like taking a building that's empty. That's how our home started over in Phoenixville. A deacon said, "What would you do with 5,000 square feet of space?" And we immediately said, "A home," because over the 22 years, that has been our predominant need. So thank you for listening.
Okay, we'll go back online to our virtual public commenters. Laura Layman, you can unmute.
Laura Layman, Meadowbrook. I am asking you today to understand three aspects of the overdevelopment. You are all aware that across this county, that your residents are really loudly saying they are tired of the overdevelopment. Every single inch is being doubled in capacity, and their roads are being clogged, and their lifestyles are totally changed. As you know, the comprehensive plans are either underway or recently finished or about to be done. And they're being aided by the planners in your planning commission department. These planners are actually perpetrating, not all of them, I don't know all of them, but I know that there are multiple ones doing the same thing that they're doing in Abington, which is to tell people that DVRPC, Delaware Valley Regional Planning, has produced some population figures, and they need to increase the units in Abington in order to accommodate these people who are coming. That is just absolute fraud. There are no people coming if they don't build the units. They're telling them they need to build apartment buildings on the shopping centers and actually just tried to do one completely illegally. Everything about it was... So we can't have that. We can't have that kind of scam or fraud coming from Montgomery County departments. In addition to that, the county planning document is coming. We were told that we would have say in it, but Scott France said people want to be in Montgomery County. It's not an option to tell them not to come. And we don't want to say that. We have ways to handle the growth. But the people disagree, and will they be heard? And you will have someone in your planning office using his credentials to act... May I finish my sentence, please?
Continue to speak after the two minutes. Let her go. Two minutes are up.
May I finish? Thank you.
Ms. Layman, I'm sorry. Your two minutes are up.
That concludes our public comment.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. We have several sets of minutes to approve. First is the minutes from the November 17th. Ms. Braccio, please be seated.
This is an objection. It's within the law.
Ms. Braccio, please take the next round of objection.
You actually Zoom is not legal because you cut them off. And if they have an objection, they can't even object because you shut off their money. That is illegal. You're a violator of the Constitution, and you have been.
I'm seconding that objection by Ms. Braccio for the record.
All right. We will begin with the approval of the minutes from the November 17th, 2022 meeting. I will move to approve the November 17th, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have minutes from the December 1st budget hearings. I will move to approve the December 1st, 2022 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners budget hearings. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? None, motion carries. And then third, we have the minutes from the special meeting, also on December 1st. And then third, we have the minutes from the special meeting, also on December the first. I will move to approve the December first, two thousand twenty-two minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners special meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. That takes us to consideration of the proposed budget. Mr. Durchan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Next slide. So just to summarize at a high level, you know, the budget process started back in June of this year. We, as a management team, met with our department heads, our project managers. There were over a hundred meetings, individual meetings completed to walk through our operations and our capital needs. As you know, the proposed budget was presented in November. Two public hearings followed. And today, as required by law, the board has to take action by the end of the year to adopt the budget. I'm going to walk through at a high level the numbers that you will be approving across multiple operating funds and the capital fund. So, next slide, please. As presented at the meeting in November, the general fund budget has a couple of steps included into it to balance the budget for two thousand twenty-three. It includes a combination of revenue enhancements, which will add about a little under twenty million of new real estate tax revenue, and also the utilization of assigned and unassigned fund balance to bring the general fund fund balance in the range of about eighteen percent. That's at the low end of our fund balance policy range. However, we're hopeful that we can outperform the budget, do better on the expenditure side, and hopefully our revenues hold up, and maybe the fund balance will be slightly higher than that. Next slide, please. So with that, the action you'll be taking today will be to approve a general fund budget that will include five hundred and twelve million of revenue in total. Next slide, please. With about five hundred and thirty-one million of expenses. And that will summarize overall what the general fund budget will be adopted at. Next slide, please. So before I go on to the other operating funds and the capital fund, I did want to talk about two programs that exist today that assist taxpayers within the county with the real estate tax. The first is the Montgomery County Real Estate Tax Deferral Program, which was established by the Board of Commissioners, this board, in two thousand twenty for implementation in two thousand twenty-one. And that is to assist homeowners that are at least sixty-five years of age. I'm going to talk in a little bit more detail about this in the slides ahead. But there's a second program also that is through the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue, and that's the Property Tax Rent Rebate Program. It was established in nineteen seventy-one and is supported by the Pennsylvania Lottery Proceeds. Since then, it's provided over seven point three billion in property tax and rent relief to homeowners and renters. Next slide, please. So first, I did want to walk through the county's Real Estate Tax Deferral Program. More detailed information on this program, including applications and FAQs, are out on the county website under the Finance Department. But just at a high level, as I said, this program was implemented in two thousand twenty-one, and it allows qualified homeowners to defer or postpone payment of increased real estate taxes for two thousand twenty-three. The homeowners have to be at least sixty-five years of age. Homeowner's household annual income has to be thirty-five thousand or less. It excludes fifty percent of social security income. And for renters, the income level is fifteen thousand or less. Also, those homeowners to qualify have to be current on county real estate tax bills. Finally, the real estate tax that is deferred, if somebody is to apply to the program and be accepted, it's deferred to a future point in time when the property is either sold or transferred. The ownership could transfer through family members and so forth. Next slide, please. The state program, which we provide a lot of information through various offices on this program, but I'm not sure that everybody's aware of it and takes advantage of it. So I think it's an opportunity here to walk through it a bit, and we're also going to provide links to information on the state website where more information can be found. But the Property Tax Rent Rebate Program provides a standard rebate up to six hundred and fifty dollars annually to qualifying homeowners. There's also supplemental rebates that occur during the year that can increase that up to nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So it's a substantial amount of money on an annual basis if you qualify. Again, homeowners have to be at least sixty-five years of age. Widowers age fifty or have to be age fifty or older. Disabled people that are age eighteen or older qualify. Again, this is for both homeowners and renters, and they qualify at the same rebate levels. Next slide, please. So this year, the state had approved an additional one-time bonus rebate for anyone that's claiming against two thousand twenty-one. So typically, it's based on your tax year. So in two thousand twenty-two, you would make application to the state for two thousand twenty-one. This bonus equals seventy percent of the original rebate amount for every claimant. So this could be up to an additional four hundred and fifty-five dollars over the maximum six fifty that I had just talked about. Homeowners and renters can still apply for the twenty-one rebate up until the end of this year, and will be eligible for the one-time bonus as well if they're approved. So there's a number of ways that you can get information on this program or apply. The easiest is to go through the State Department of Revenue website. I have a link here, we're going to post a link out on the county website. That provides all the detailed information, the applications. You can submit electronically to the state, but also they do have an eight-hundred number that you can call. They're pretty good about it. I mean, I've tried it myself, you know, it's not a long wait. They do provide very good information over the phone, so there's assistance that way if you have questions regarding the program and the next steps that you can take. So I would encourage anyone that is listening, or even the reporters that might be reporting on, you know, this presentation to include this information so that the word gets out, particularly with some of the additional funding that's available for two thousand twenty-two. Next slide, please. So in addition to the general fund, there are seven other funds that the board's taken action on today. We have six special revenue funds that are outlined in the table here on this slide, and then one internal service fund, which is our self-insurance, property and liability damage fund. Next slide, please. Then there is the capital fund, which was reviewed at the meeting in November, and there's more detail about the capital program out on the county website. As was presented by R.J. Griffin, we have a very detailed storybook on all the capital projects that's available for access, you know, to the public. You can go in there and drill down on the projects, get descriptions of what's going on, updates, and actually see the various numbers that are tied to the projects. The action that you'll be taking today includes just the two thousand twenty-three projected capital budget. And as I said, the details for all those projects are out on the county website.
Thank you. Let me get a motion on the floor, and then we can see if there's any questions. And as you just reiterated, there's several motions here that are part of this, but I'll begin with the first one. So I will move that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Montgomery, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the tax millage rate be levied on all real property within the county that is subject to the taxation for county purposes shall be four and six to seven hundredths mils on each dollar of assessed valuation. Be it further resolved for the general fund expenses of the county totaling five hundred and thirty million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, are hereby appropriated from the revenues available for the specific purposes as more fully itemized on the budget form attached in a file in the Office of the County Commissioners Chief Financial Officer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Mr. Durchan, just want to reiterate for folks who are listening, who maybe haven't had the opportunity to hear all of these meetings. As we know, individuals' property taxes are made up of three components. Their municipal component, their school board, which is usually the bulk of their property tax, and the county, which is the smallest portion. And for the average property owner in Montgomery County, the eight percent increase will mean how much of a dollar increase in their taxes?
It's roughly the larger majority of homes are under four hundred thousand in market value. That would result in about thirty-five additional tax dollars a year.
Okay, so for the average homeowner in the county, it will, on the county portion of their taxes, it'll be about a thirty-five dollar increase. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
That was my question.
I have comments. When this two thousand twenty-three proposed budget was put before us last month, I clearly stated that I would not support a budget that reflected higher taxes, higher borrowing, and higher spending. None of that has changed since, and for that reason, I will be opposing the two thousand twenty-three county budget. There's glaring expenses that are, I find, to be unnecessary. One that's constantly mentioning is the Outlandish Justice Center construction project, which was originally budgeted to be two hundred and eighty million dollars. That has now grown to over, well over four hundred million dollars. There's other capital projects that I find to be entirely too expensive, one being the construction of the storage warehouse at the Eagleville campus, which is over ten million dollars. And another is the construction of an archive record building that's eight point three million dollars. So there are a couple of quick examples of expensive capital projects that are causing borrowing to increase and taxes to increase. And the private sector would never build these type of structures for the cost of your building them, because it's not sustainable. And beyond these extravagant capital expenditures, I routinely impose increased spending on contracts related to mail-in voting, for example, which have added millions of dollars in additional costs to the county operating budget. And I've also opposed what I consider to be unnecessary or redundant staffing positions. For example, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Director, a high-six-figure salary job, I believe is not necessary, and it's also redundant when you consider the consulting contracts we have with vendors that are doing the same type of similar work. And the way this was all proposed and the timeline of events is very disheartening. We are proposing, and it'll be passed today by my colleagues, a tax increase, at the same time, a salary increase in two thousand twenty-four for future elected county officials. And it is a slap in the face to the property owners that are facing a county property tax, in many instances, a higher municipality property tax and school district tax. And a lot of it goes back to outlandish capital projects. And I'll give you an example that's local. The Colonial School District constructed a very expensive new middle school. The Plymouth Township is considering building a new township administration building, and their school district and township taxes are likely to increase along with their county taxes. So this is a trend that is not sustainable, and I hear from several members of the public that do not agree with this, and they would simply like us to scale back. We're taking more money out of their pockets, and at the same time, government expenses are growing. They're not being curbed, it's not being frozen, it's growing. And the fact that elected officials in the future will have a higher salary, a twelve percent salary increase for elected officials, is wrong. And it's also going down a slippery slope, because it signals to the couple thousand county employees here in Montgomery County that do not like what was done. For example, non-contractual county employees receive a four percent salary increase and a twelve percent salary increase for future elected officials. I believe that is an insult to the employees, and you will eventually see more collective bargaining and organizing in various departments with the county, which will in return increase more spending. So I consider this position to be public service, not self-service. I submitted a letter to the Human Resources Department this week explaining that if I am a commissioner in the future, I will not accept a salary increase. This is supposed to be public service. And for a handful of elected officials to receive that type of increase is unacceptable. So I am opposing this budget. I know I will be outnumbered two to one, but I want the public to know that I do my absolute best over the course of the seven years I've been commissioner to point out anything I view as ineffective or too costly or unnecessary for you, the taxpayers. And to think that we have three property tax increases in a row is absolutely unacceptable. And I will proudly vote no and continue to do my best to curb spending and protect the taxpayers in Montgomery County. And that concludes my comments.
All right. I do just want to make sure that there's two things that are not being conflated here, that there is nothing in the two thousand twenty-three budget that reflects the two thousand twenty-four salary increase that was voted on for elected officials. And since I'd have been a commissioner, my commitment to our employees has been unwavering. We were one of the first counties, maybe the second county in the Commonwealth, to create a fifteen-dollar minimum wage for our employees that were not represented. Obviously, our represented employees who are represented by unions, which I fully support, that is a contractual arrangement that is worked out usually every three years between the union representatives and the county. So they are treated sequentially different, in different times, at different places are those salaries adjusted. But it is an unwavering commitment to our employees that they are treated fairly, compensated fairly. They do incredible work for the people of our county. And just in this past year, the year that we're finishing, not only did our employees get a rate increase of two point seven five percent back in January, but as inflation kicked in, they got a mid-year increase as well in July. And if we approve this budget, which I intend to support, we'll get a four percent salary increase beginning next year. We have also ensured that our employees pay very little of the increase in health insurance costs, and in fact, our employees who are in the lower portions of their salary range aren't paying any additional costs in their healthcare for themselves or their families. I think it's very important that we're straightforward with our taxpayers about why these tax increases are critical. It's critical that we are able to attract a strong county workforce. We have more vacancies right now in the county than we have ever had. And a big reason of that is because counties around us have increased their salaries even more, and the private sector has increased their salaries even more than that. And so it's very difficult for us to compete. We have a duty to serve, all of you are constituents. We are facing the same cost pressures as a county government in terms of procurement and wages that we are all facing in our personal lives. And so it is a difficult decision. It's not one that we came to easily, but we have a duty to ensure that we have the proper staff, that we have bridges that aren't structurally deficient, that we have buildings whose roofs aren't leaking, that we're able to get out of very costly lease agreements for some of the operations that Commissioner Gail just mentioned, to get into buildings that we own that will reduce our costs over time. Our fiscal management has been lauded by all the national organizations like the Moody's Bond Rating Agency, who has given us a triple-A bond rating now for five years in a row. When I became a commissioner in two thousand fifteen, I walked into a situation where the county was in the process of being downgraded for the third time. We have climbed our way out of that morass with careful management, with forward-looking management, and with disciplined management. Commissioner Gail has contributed to none of that. He has voted against multiple budgets. He never offers any solution that's actually actionable to fix some of these challenges that we inherited for the most part. You know, one of which is that a prior administration went six years, six, without making any contribution into our pension fund for our employees. These are just unacceptable situations that we had to rectify. The building that we're sitting in is another one. Many of you remember what this building looked like just a couple of years ago. So these are difficult decisions. They have been made very deliberately, they've been made by exploring a number of options. And it's for those reasons that I am supporting this budget. And I do just want to make one comment about the increase for elected officials. The state statutes, which I referenced earlier, require that those votes be taken the year before the election year. There's a reason for that, so that voters have an opportunity to weigh in if they want to bring those commissioners back and those other elected road officers back or not in two thousand twenty-four. And you, obviously, all of you listening, have that opportunity. I do also want to state for the record, because this has been, I think, somewhat overlooked, that if that, assuming that folks get elected, and by the way, the folks elected in 2024 can reverse that increase if they want to. But assuming that that goes forward, it will have been fourteen years since any of the elected officials at the county level has seen any change in their pay. And so a group came to the commissioners asking for that to be changed, that there be finally an increase after fourteen years. And that was debated in public as required, and we decided to move forward with that increase. So I urge people to look at the facts, to look at the big picture, and to understand that these very difficult decisions that we are making are out there to make sure that we can properly serve our constituents, make sure that you have roads and bridges that you can drive on to make sure that when you call 911, someone is there to answer your call and can respond quickly, and that we treat our employees here at the county with the dignity and the respect that they deserve. And these are all reasons why I support this budget.
So I'd just like to briefly say, I've been doing this since 2017 now. And yes, I do consider this public service. I am not here for the salary at all. And it's very easy to say, don't build this, don't build that, until bridges are closed, until you have employees working in buildings where they have mold growing through the windows there. We've had to make a lot of tough decisions, but we're a community. And when we talk about people sleeping on the streets, and we talk about people in addiction, and we talk about people who need resources to do that. And not only do you need resources, but you need human capital, which is our employees. Our employees received a three percent inflation increase mid-year this year. And since I've been a commissioner, I've been committed to making sure that our employees are paid competitively so that they continue to provide the excellent services that they do to our residents who are most in need. So you can't talk about wanting to help people in need, but then talk about you can't raise the revenue to do that. So this is a tough budget. I know it's tough times for all. But, you know, I'm a little tired of people talking about helping people until it comes time to put your money where your mouth is. We're the second wealthiest county in Pennsylvania. We can do more and we can do better for those in our community who need it most, which is why I intend to vote in favor of this budget.
And I would like to add additional comments that I disagree with that outlook, where it's difficult to just increase spending and increase taxes to pay for that additional spending year after year, because that's exactly what the two of you do every time we have the budget. You increase taxes, you increase spending. You don't hold the line on spending, you don't hold the line on taxes. That's when the real difficult decisions come into play. And I'm glad it was pointed out that I oppose every budget tax increase and spending increase that you put forward. Thank you for clarifying that for the public.
All right, if there's no additional comments, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Washington?
Chair, opposed.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Motion carries. Next, we have a motion that, I will make the motion, that the following seven operating budgets with expenditures as noted below are hereby adopted, and that the proper county officers are authorized and directed in accordance with county purchasing regulations to expend funds for the fiscal year 2023 within the limits set forth below. The Health Choices Fund, two hundred and thirty-three million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. The Emergency Dispatch Services or the 911 Fund, twenty million, six hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. The Liquid Fuel Tax Fund, two million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. The Motor Vehicle Registration Fund, three million, eight hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. The Property and Liability Damage Fund, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Montgomery County Community College Fund, twenty-four million, seven thousand dollars. And the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, sixty-nine million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. Next, we have our 2023 Capital Fund Budget. I will move that the Capital Fund Budget for the 2023 fiscal year is hereby adopted in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, of which two hundred and thirty-eight million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars shall be funds of the county and be it further resolved that the proper county officers are authorized and directed to proceed with the following capital programs, subject to all applicable federal, Commonwealth, and county laws, ordinances, regulations, and policies. The County Campus Plan, one hundred and twelve million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Assets and Infrastructure, seventy-three million, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Planning Commission, fifty-two million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Information Technology and Solutions, eighteen million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Public Safety, four million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Economic Development, two million dollars. Rolling Stock, two million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. Correction Facility, four million, four thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. And another category of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and ten. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Motion carries, two to one. All right, we'll move on to resolutions. Is Ms. Silver online? She's virtual, okay, great. Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Silver. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. I have two resolutions for you today, and I'm going to share my screen in one moment, please. The first resolution for your consideration is a required amendment to the 2021 Annual Action Plan as it relates to the additional dollars we received under the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD's Home Partnerships Program through the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. Montgomery County has been allocated five million, eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars in home ARPA dollars to provide homeless, increased homelessness assistance and supportive services, particularly around housing. Beginning in September of 2022, my office, the Montgomery County Office of Housing and Community Development under the Department of Health and Human Services, partnered with the Montgomery County Recovery Office under their leadership to plan and implement the public participation process to figure out how we were going to spend these funds. So from September to November of this year, our two offices worked together to develop a multi-methods public participation process, and we gathered a lot of really great input on how to prioritize these funds. We distributed a survey in both Spanish and English and received well over seventy responses. We held two public events, one virtual town hall with over a hundred and thirty registrants, as well as an in-person town hall with the Asian-American Pacific Islander community. And we also held interviews specifically with people currently experiencing homelessness. We were asking everyone how to utilize these funds, how to prioritize these funds, and for what population. We also took a look at our county's Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS, data, so that together, these sources of both quantitative and qualitative data were used to create the draft allocation plan. Your resolution today will approve the plan in its full format to go up for another public comment period of thirty days. The plan itself will be posted on Montgomery County's Recovery Office website, which can be found by visiting www.montco PA.org and navigating to the Recovery Office website page. The plan goes into even more detail of all this public input process that I just described, and it also gives a draft allocation that we are proposing. The public overwhelmingly supported for these funds to be used for people experiencing homelessness and at imminent risk of homelessness to provide both emergency, non-congregate sheltering, as well as the permanent affordable housing that is needed to end someone's homelessness. So the proposed plan up for public comment today will be to invest a million of the dollars into the acquisition and development of non-congregate, meaning individual rooms, emergency shelters, and then sixty-five percent of the funding to go towards, again, what is needed to end someone's homelessness, which is the development of permanent, stable, accessible, affordable rental housing. And then the statutory requirement of fifteen percent for administration and planning in order to get these funds out into the community, which totals our full allocation amount. Next step says that public comment on the plan will be received beginning tomorrow and lasting through January sixteenth for a thirty-day public comment period. The public can comment via a survey, which the Recovery Office will have online, by contacting either the Recovery Office or the Montgomery County Office of Housing directly, or participating in a public hearing, which will take place virtually on January fourth at 11:00 a.m. To register for that Zoom meeting, again, instructions will be online. All comments will be received by January sixteenth, will be considered. And then I will be back to you during the January nineteenth meeting for a final adoption of the plan. And then we will submit that plan to the federal government and have the funding available in the near future to the community. Thank you very much, and that is it for my first resolution.
All right, thank you, Ms. Silver. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the amendment to the 2021 Annual Action Plan, including the attached list of proposed activities for funding under the Home ARP program, to be available for public comment for a period of thirty days, beginning December sixteenth, 2022, and ending on January sixteenth, 2023, with a public hearing to be conducted through virtual electronic means on January fourth, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. Be it further resolved, the public comment will be accepted by the Board of Commissioners until January sixteenth, 2023, with final action on the proposed amendment to the 2021 Annual Action Plan to be taken on January nineteenth, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, and you have a second resolution?
I do. The second resolution for consideration today is for an authorization from you to submit the Whole Home Repairs Program grant application to the State's Department of Community and Economic Development, or DCED. So the Whole Home Repairs Program will provide funding for countywide agencies to address habitability and safety concerns for homeowners, provide measures to improve energy or water efficiency, and make units accessible for individuals with disabilities. Additionally, the program will also provide funding for construction-related workforce development. Funding is being made available by, again, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, or DCED, to all sixty-seven counties. And our allocation that we are eligible to receive here in Montgomery County is six million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. And your resolution today, again, will allow us to apply for that funding.
Thank you.
The...
Sorry, thought you were done.
Oh, sorry. Promise I don't have too much more information. I'll get through this quickly. Just a little bit, initial guidelines for this program is that once up and running, up to fifty thousand dollar grants will be eligible for homeowners in Montgomery County whose household income does not exceed eighty percent of the area median income, and/or up to fifty thousand dollars in a loan to small landlords renting affordable units in Montgomery County. As I mentioned before, some of the funding is required to be invested in workforce development programs that will connect trainees to jobs through committed employer partnerships related to improving the habitability and performance of homes. And then the funding will be used for program delivery and administration, including case management, managing the application process, and managing monitoring. Just want to quickly mention in these initial stages of the project that, you know, to design this program and to design the application to the state, our initial collaboration partners include Maya Office, which is under the Department of Health and Human Services, and we're also working with our Senior Services Office with the intention to gather the data around needs, particularly for people who are aging and can age in place in their home. We're also looking at data and needs analysis of homeowner repair programs through our Planning Commission, our Commerce Department, and our Redevelopment Authority. Once we submit the application to the state, the next steps will, we will open for public input on policy, program design, and prioritization of these funds. We will ramp up the program and also, if need be, solicit for providers to do the actual construction and rehab and workforce training work. And we hope to begin accepting applications for the program by mid-2023. And that is it.
Great, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute and file the necessary documentation with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to complete a Whole Home Repairs Program application in the amount of six million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Ms. Silver, I just want to express how excited I am about this program. I think this is just an incredible opportunity that our folks in the General Assembly in Harrisburg did pass, I believe, in a bipartisan basis. And what's exciting about this opportunity is that it helps solve homelessness by preventing it in the first place. This will provide funds that we've never had before to make very necessary repairs to existing homes so that they can remain habitable and that we can continue to house the people who are in those homes and love them and want to stay in them going forward, but perhaps didn't have the ability to make those repairs themselves. So really enthusiastic about this and looking forward to getting this started. I hope that, I hope at the latest, that we will be accepting proposals to do this work by the middle of 2023. I hope maybe we can inch that forward a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, hearing no additional comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Silver. Mr. France, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two items, but the first done are our municipal planning assistance contracts and renewals for two communities, Cheltenham Township and Lower Marion Township. This is our standard three-year contract in which we provide planning services at a fifty percent subsidy, where fifty percent of the cost is paid by the municipality. Cheltenham's, both municipalities, Cheltenham Township and Lower Marion Township, their contracts expire December thirty-first of this year. And so the new contracts would begin January first of 2023, extend to December thirty-first of 2025. For Cheltenham Township, we would be completing an update to their comprehensive plan during the service terms. Once completed, we will assist with township-directed implementation activities and continue to support ordinance development activities and sustainability and resiliency planning. That contract would be a total over three years of a hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, with the municipal contribution being fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and one dollars. For Lower Marion Township, their contract involves providing graphic design assistance to update their community map, development of a township-wide active transportation plan, and preparing a master plan for the Montgomery Avenue corridor through Penn Valley in Narberth, including coordination with Narberth Borough. That contract is a total for three years of ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. The municipal portion contribution is forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Any questions?
Let me put a motion on the floor, and we'll see. I will move that the Montgomery County Commissioners hereby approve the contracts for municipal planning assistance outlined below, and the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next?
Thank you. The next item is a, if you put the PowerPoint up. This is a proposal to update our Act 247 review fee schedule that the Planning Commission puts forward. Our existing fee schedule is in place and was last amended or adjusted as far as the costs go in 2014. These are the fees that are paid by land developers and property owners who are expanding the number of units or residential square, non-residential square footage on their property. If you go to the next slide. I want to stress, this is not applicable to most homeowners as they might be adding on to their house or converting their garage. Those are local permit processes. This is for only a new unit that's created or a new non-residential square footage added. These also are exempt from municipal governments, school districts, or other public facilities such as a sewage facility, volunteer firehouses, even. We don't charge for that. And these charges are enabled by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, which does mandate that it be tied to the expense incurred with producing these reviews. The reviews themselves are advisory and go to the municipal governments at the time of application, within thirty days in most cases. Next slide. Our existing fee schedule, again, just to give you some context, as I review the updates, for residential applicants, we base the fee with a base flat fee plus a fee per lot or dwelling unit, depending on if it's a subdivision or land development. For non-residential... For non-residential, a similar structure, but that base flat fee is augmented by a fee for every gross 1,000 square feet that are added. Next slide. So this is a quick snapshot of the justification for the need for this update. As I mentioned, it's been since 2014 since we updated these fees. Obviously, the inflation rate has been much higher in that time period, about 27%. And if you looked at our last full year of costs, we're not quite at the end of 2022 yet, and that would be 2021, our fee revenue that year, which was a pretty active year for development, was $320,000. And the cost to review, after extensive analysis across the planning commission's activities, came to $347,471, which obviously outweighs the revenue generated. If we were to convert those numbers into $2,023, which means upgrading the cost to current salary figures, then you would be looking at the cost of that work being $382,000. And if we updated the fee schedule as proposed today, that would generate approximately 20% more, to be $384,000, thus creating a more connected and justifiable expense level or revenue level. Next slide, please. Just to give the public an idea of the amount of activity that goes into these reviews, this is an outline of the flow of work associated when an application comes through. Obviously, some applications require more work than others, and we identify the level of review and the amount of time needed, the amount of staff coordination that goes into it. I won't go through all these steps, but they do incur a certain amount of time based on staff. And we take this very seriously. This is our responsibility. And when development applications come through to the county and to the municipalities, that's how our built environment gets created. So this is our time to have input, to make suggestions, to make recommendations, to be more sustainable, to improve development types, to take other factors into consideration, and we take that very seriously. Next slide. So this is, again, an overview of what the fee schedule changes would be. They mostly take place across the residential and non-residential land development scenario. On the left are the figures used. As we were doing the analysis to determine what the new updates should be, we also determined that the tier structure that had been in place, as far as the number of units and where they break down, or the number of square footage, was not exactly serving us in the best way that it could. So we expanded those into additional tiers, which made more logical sense when you looked at example proposals or example submissions, and we felt that was the right thing to do, also to make it more fair across the board for all applicants. Next slide. This is just a way to look at the examples included in our analysis was looking at our neighbors in Bucks and Chester County in particular, to see what they were charging, and to make sure that our either existing or proposed rates were on par with a kind of a market rate assessment. You can see here in the case of residential, as you go up with the number of units, we actually did not propose changes to the higher levels. We felt we were already at the upper end and justified in keeping it at that same level rather than increase. But the lower level, we found we were behind, in some cases dramatically so, what neighbors were charging. And we also thought with the amount of work at those different tiers, that it made sense to make these adjustments now. Next slide. And on the non-residential side, somewhat similar, but you see, I think, a difference in how the neighboring counties stack up, as they have different fee systems in place. Bucks is more straightforward, but that also results in higher rates on the lower levels. Here, we did see a need to adjust our top level or our largest developments quite a bit, or a little bit, to match the neighboring counties, as well as the amount of work that goes into reviews of that scope. We don't get a whole lot of 250,000 square foot submissions, but when we do, we take a lot of time and look at all the issues and impacts that are going to come from those, because there are generally a lot of them. All right, next slide. So to sum it all up, we are proposing to increase the fees and the adjusted tier structures for residential and non-residential land developments. It's not a flat percent increase across the board. We did extensive analysis to see where those increases should take place. On average, and it does depend on what comes in, so I can't give you a figure that we know it will increase by, but approximately 20% is our estimate. At the same time, we are not proposing to change fees for many of the lower-cost items that are on our fee schedule. These are generally, can be between $100 or $200. They include lot line adjustments, conditional uses, special reviews, private zoning ordinance petitions, and re-submissions. If a application comes in and we review it and they pay the full fee, if there's a change made to it and it comes back, we charge a much lower amount than the amount of roughly $150, just to process and look through and make sure those new changes are also relevant or recommended or not. And then finally, we don't have fees for the, as I mentioned, the municipal or public applications that are listed there. This fee schedule was recommended by our MCPC Board at our November 16th Board Meeting, recommended for endorsement by the county commissioners. If adopted today, it would take place effective January 1st, 2023.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the adoption of the attached Act 247 fee schedule effective January 1st, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. So, Mr. France, I know you said this, but just to reiterate that this is not something that homeowners will be facing, someone who wants to just, you know, add on a family room or something like that.
Right. They want to subdivide the property and build a new, a completely new house, then yes, that would be about 100, that would literally be under $200 for the application.
Hearing no additional comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. Next, Mr. Stein, thank you, Ms. Stein.
Thank you.
Lease extension for one of our district courts?
Yes, this would be the District Court in Lafayette Hill, located at 4002 Center Avenue. We've been in that location since 2005. The most recent renewal occurred in 2018 and ends at the end of this month. This would extend, the amendment would extend it for one additional year, with options for additional years, with an eye towards relocating at the beginning of 2024.
All right. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize Montgomery County to execute the necessary documents to enter into a lease extension agreement with Teresa Oliver for a one-year period for the purpose of housing District Court 38-1-23, with an annual rent of $76,672 for the first year, and a 2% increase for each year thereafter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, a lease amendment for the Collegeville District Court.
Yes, this is for the location at 133 Lever Road in Collegeville. The lease is currently slated to end at the end of 2023, although this amendment will permit the county to terminate the lease earlier in the year to coincide with the planned move to a new location.
All right. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law and subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize entering into a lease agreement with Rick Moscarelio, owner of the property located at Ridge Pike and Cross Keys Road in Plymouth Township, for the purpose of housing District Court 38-1-20, beginning September 1st, 2023, at a cost of $2, I'm sorry, $22.90 per square foot. Is there a second?
Take a quick look to make sure, is that the correct address? Listen on that one?
That's, that's Lower Providence.
Okay. That should be, should probably be.
Yeah, it's not in Plymouth Township. Yeah, it can't be in Plymouth Township, so I don't.
It's probably a college.
That apparently is the legal address, though.
Plymouth is, or Lower Providence?
Definitely Lower Providence.
It would have to be, it would have to be Lower Providence.
It's not in Plymouth Township.
Yeah, okay. All right. Would you like me to re-read the motion, or just?
If you could, please, just a second.
Okay, all right. So I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law and subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby, sorry, I'm sorry, hereby authorize entering into a lease agreement with Rick Moscarelio, owner of the property located at Ridge Pike and Cross Keys Road in Lower Providence Township, for the purpose of housing District Court 38-1-20, beginning September 1st, 2023, at a cost of $22.90 per square foot. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And next, we have a commissioner's reappointments to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board. I will move that Pamela Kelly, Peggy Lee Clark, Susan Klausert, Dr. Victoria Bistecki Perez, Paul Papasergi, and Mary Beth Williams be reappointed to the Montgomery County Workforce Development Board to serve terms that begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have an appointment and reappointments to the Montgomery County Community College Board. I will move to appoint Kathryn Carter and to reappoint Lisa Binder and Terry Riley to the Montgomery County Community College Board of Trustees for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2028, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have a reappointment to the Montgomery County Conservation District. I will move to reappoint myself, Commissioner Valerie Erkusch, for a term to begin January 1st, 2023, and to expire December 31st, 2023, to serve as the county's representative, and to reappoint Andrew Frankenfield as the Farmer Director, and Monica Bersik and Timothy Woodrow as the Public Directors, for terms to begin January 1st, 2023, and to expire December 31st, 2026, to the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Conservation District, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the state conservation district law. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. Next, we have reappointments to the Montgomery County Open Space Board. I will move to reappoint Kim Shepherd and Gail Farmer to the Montgomery County Open Space Board for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2027, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have reappointments to the Montgomery County Planning Commission. I will move that Mr. Stephen Klein and Ms. Nicole Klein Elser be reappointed to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have reappointments to the Montgomery County Transportation Authority Board. I will move to reappoint Laura Frin and Janet Cunningham for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2027, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have an appointment and reappointment to the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. I will move that Karima Ropo be appointed to serve the remaining term of Gloria Ocolomi, that is to expire on August 31st, 2025, and that Al Zown and Gaetan Gianni Jr. be reappointed to the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board for terms to begin immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2026, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have an appointment to the Montgomery County Youth Center Board of Managers. I will move that Toreya Hudson be appointed as designee for Commissioner Ken Lawrence Jr. on the Board of Managers of the Montgomery County Youth Center to attend meetings of the Board of Managers when the commissioner cannot attend, and serving at the pleasure of the commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I will second.
I just want to make a board comment globally to thank all of the folks that volunteer to serve on our boards and commissions. These are all unpaid volunteer positions, and just want to comment, as we reappoint and appoint all these folks, how grateful we are for their service. Is there any other board comment? All right, hearing now, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. Perdue.
Good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the commissioner's department's personnel list. It is a five-page document dated Wednesday, December 14th, 2022, with a timestamp of 10:35 a.m. Of note, I'm sorry, all positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the December 15th, 2022 Personnel Presentation is given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Perdue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Before we move to a vote, Ms. Perdue, I just want to thank you for your many years of service here at the county. I know you will be leaving us for another great opportunity, and I just want to say thank you and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Any other comment?
I'll wait till salary board.
Okay. We could split it up a little bit, yeah. All right, then we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. And it is time for Way to Go MOCO announcements again. We have two months worth here, because we had a couple of long agendas, so we have combined November and December again, I'm sorry, November and December together. But to remind you, I'm just pleased to talk about our Way to Go MOCO winners for both of these months. This is an opportunity open to all county employees. This is a program that encourages employees to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. So far, we have more than 160 county employees who've submitted nominations, singing the praises of their coworkers. Every month, we draw five employees from the list of nominations to win $150 in their paycheck to recognize them for their work. So through November and December, I am pleased to announce the following winners. We have John McLloyd with our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites for his dedication to his job, his work to engage with park visitors, and his flexibility to change shifts if needed. We have Deputy John Foster with our Sheriff's Department for his dedication to his work, even after sustaining an injury on the job last Fourth of July. Johan Tudo with our Office of Children and Youth for being a wonderful resource of information, and for her dedication to serving the children and families being provided services. We have Shana Quintrell with the District Attorney's Office, Juvenile Division, for always being a team player and going above and beyond to help anyone. Bridgette, Bridgette with the Solicitor's Office for going above and beyond to help implement the new electronic contracting process to make the process run more efficiently. Grace O'Hara with our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites for going above and beyond to help a veteran who became homeless connect to resources and housing with our Office of Veterans Affairs. Marge Deschawn with our Department of Public Safety's EMS Training Division for being an integral part of the daily interactions with EMS providers and going out of their way to assist them in any way possible. Tonya Butler with our Recorder of Deeds Office for always helping customers with their document requests and for providing excellent customer service. Carol Pantone with our Orphans Court for going above and beyond to support court staff, attorneys, and being helpful to everyone. Jennifer Vargas with our Office of Children and Youth for her bilingual capabilities to help assist Spanish-speaking children and families, and for being a team player to help others in the office. Congratulations to all of you, and we'll be reaching out to you by email with more details, and keep up the great work. Okay, Ms. O'Malley, advertisements, a biz, and RFPs.
Yes, first, we have a bid on behalf of Public Safety for radiation portal monitors. The successful responder will provide three radiation portal monitors and a vehicle conversion kit to replace aging equipment. Monitors are passive radiation detection devices used for the screening of illicit sources. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, an RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for the Narsetown Dam Fish Ladder Consultant Services. The successful responder will provide annual services for the Bridgeport Fish Ladder, the service requests as needed for the Narsetown Dam. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Three, RFP on behalf of the Tax Claim Bureau for print house and mail services for delinquent taxes. The successful responder will provide print and mail services for delinquent taxes. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of bids and RFPs, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, next, we have advertisements of bids and RFPs for the Southeastern Pennsylvania Task Force.
Yes, one is an RFP for an emergency medical services strategic plan for Montgomery County. The successful responder will organize and deliver a comprehensive assessment with strategic report and recommendations addressing the future of the emergency medical services system. Report will address contemporary concerns and be useful as a planning tool for the future. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Two, an RFP for automatic license plate readers, managed services for the regional counties of Berks, Fox, Chester, Delaware, Montgomery, and Philadelphia. The successful responder will provide comprehensive program management and field support of the CIPA RTF Automatic License Plate Recognition Program for the region's approximately two hundred and thirty mobile ALPR units. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montcopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. And I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisement of RFPs for the Southeastern Pennsylvania Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we have awards of contract for the county.
One, contract award assets and infrastructure master site plan consulting services for Green Lane Park. Simone Collins Incorporated of Norristown, PA, one hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. Contract provides for a master site development plan for Green Lane Park community vision and assessment of future needs for the next fifteen years. RFP twenty-two fifty was viewed by sixty-three providers for responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Two, contract award assets and infrastructure fuel. Wex Incorporated of Portland, Maine, three hundred sixty thousand dollars. Contract provides estimated credit card fuel purchases for county-owned vehicles for the twenty-twenty-three term. Fuel is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Three, contract award assets and infrastructure consumable paper products for county buildings and offices. Veritiv Corporation of Cantal, PA, seventy-five thousand dollars. Contract provides consumable paper products for use at county-owned facilities. Products are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Contract period is for the twenty-twenty-three term. Four, contract award Board of Assessment proprietary software, Tyler Technologies Incorporated of Moran, Ohio, four hundred twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. Contract provides maintenance and hosting of the AIS World Software. AIS World Software allows for remote entry of assessment and tax data. Software and services are proprietary. Contract period is for the twenty-twenty-three term. Five, contract award court-related departments legal research access for court-related county departments, Thompson Warders West of Carroll Stream, Illinois, five hundred thousand dollars. Contract provides for access of Westlaw online and print legal research resources. County users include district attorney, public defender, solicitor, and court services. Contract period is for the twenty-twenty-three term. Six, contract award courts, legal services for low-income parents in juvenile court matters. Legal aid of Southeastern PA of Norristown, PA, seventy thousand dollars. Contract provides legal representation for lower-income parents in juvenile court matters and parental termination matters in juvenile and orphans court for the twenty-twenty-three term. Legal aid of Southeastern PA is uniquely and individually suited to provide the assistance sought by the courts. Contract award courts, legal advocacy services for minors, Montgomery County Project of Norristown, PA, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Contract provides legal advocacy representation for minors involved in the juvenile court and orphans court system for the twenty-twenty-three term. Montgomery County Child Advocacy Project is uniquely and individually suited to provide the assistance sought by the courts. Eight, contract award district attorney vehicle. Connaughtelli Nissan of Conshohocken, PA, thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars. Contract provides for a twenty-twenty-two Nissan Pathfinder. Specification six-four-nine-three was viewed by five providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Nine, contract award district attorney firearms. Whitmer Public Safety Group Incorporated of Coatesville, PA, forty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Contract provides for forty-five firearm units with accessories for use by the county detectives. Specification six-four-eight-nine was viewed by twenty providers with three responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Ten, contract award Health and Human Services Health Record System for Public Health. Patagonia Health Incorporated of Cary, North Carolina, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Contract provides for an electronic health record system. Software is proprietary, contract is for a period of two years through December twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. Eleven, contract award Health and Human Services Home Ownership Counseling Services, Genesis Housing Corporation of Norristown, PA, fifty thousand dollars. Contract provides for housing counseling services. RFP twenty-two fifty-seven was viewed by eight providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contract is for a period of one year with three optional annual renewal terms. Twelve, contract award Health and Human Services Volunteer Services for the Office of Senior Services, multiple providers, two hundred seventy thousand dollars. Contracts provide for agencies which will facilitate the recruitment of volunteers to serve Montgomery County residents age sixty and older. RFP twenty-two fifty-four was viewed by thirty-seven providers with five responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest rated responders. Contracts are for a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Awarded responders, Elder Net of Lower Marion and Norbert of Bryn Mawr, PA, Family Services of Montgomery County, of Eagleville, PA, RSVP Volunteers of King of Prussia, PA, The Open Link Incorporated of Pensburgh, PA. Thirteen, contract award Human Resources PMA Management Corporation of Bluebell, PA, fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Contract provides for workers' compensation claims administration services as per RFP nineteen thirty-two. This is the first of two optional annual renewal terms. Fourteen, contract award Recorder of Deeds Document Indexing Services Indus Data Designs Incorporated of Naperville, Illinois, seventy thousand dollars. Contract provides for verification and indexing services for all recorded documents. RFP twenty-two fifty-nine was viewed by twenty-six providers with six responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contract is for a period of two years with three optional annual renewal terms. Fifteen, contract renewal Human Resources Consultant Trial Group of King of Prussia, PA, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Contract provides for employee benefits consulting administration services as per RFP nineteen thirteen. This is the third of thirty-three optional annual renewals for the twenty-twenty-three term. Sixteen, contract renewal Human Resources Insurance Broker, KMRD Partners Incorporated of Warrington, PA, one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Contract provides for commercial insurance broker for the county's property, casualty, fidelity bond, general liability umbrella, and other insurance coverages as per RFP twenty-sixty-four. This is the second of three optional annual renewal terms. Seventeen, contract award Human Resources Healthcare Stock Loss Insurance, HM Life Insurance Company of Plymouth Meeting, PA, two million, three hundred fifty thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars. Contract provides stock loss insurance for the county health plan which protects the plan against individual catastrophic health claims over three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Award to HM Life Insurance Company is at the recommendation of County Benefits Consultant which has determined that the HM Life Insurance Company proposal provided the best overall economic benefit to the county. Contract will cover the period one-one twenty-twenty-three through twelve-thirty-one twenty-twenty-three. Eighteen, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Temporary VOIP Technician, New Era Technology, LI Incorporated of East Hanover, New Jersey. Contract provides for an onsite VOIP technician at a rate of one hundred dollars per hour with interim services required until full-time staff or higher. Services are available through a PEPPM technology cooperative contract. Nineteen, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Software Training and Support Services for SharePoint Projects, Eastern Business Software Incorporated of Rumel, PA, forty-five thousand dollars. Contract provides for a software training and support services technical consultants. Services are available through a PA State contract. Twenty, contract award Information and Technology Solutions Court-related Document Processing Software Support, Paperless Solutions Incorporated of Fensale, PA, two hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Contract provides ongoing software support and maintenance for the court-related document processing system for use by multiple court-related departments as per their master maintenance agreement. Contract term is one-one twenty-twenty-three to twelve-thirty-one twenty-twenty-three. Twenty-one, contract award Planning Commission Construction Inspection Services for the Ridge Pike Project. Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated of Postale, PA, two million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Contract provides for construction inspection services for the Ridge Pike Improvement Project Section B, Belvoir Road to Chemical Road in Plymouth Township. Statement of interest was advertised on Pendott Engineering and Construction Management System with six responses received. Review and scoring of all submissions was completed by the Planning Commission. Contract is awarded to the highest rated responder. Contracts for an estimated thirty-six month term. Twenty-two, contract award Public Safety Field Communications Vehicle Computer Equipment and Trotto Life and Safety Incorporated of Omaha, Nebraska, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Contract provides for equipment and installation services necessary to incorporate the nine-one-one phone system into the field communications unit. Services are proprietary. Twenty-three, contract award Public Safety CAD System Network Switches, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and eight cents. Contract provides for four computer-aided dispatch workstation network switches to aid in management of CAD network traffic. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Twenty-four, contract award Public Safety Software Licenses, CDW Government of Chicago, Illinois, one hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars. Contract provides for creative point modem licensing which provides the link between police, fire, and EMS vehicles and the county's computer-aided dispatch system. Software licenses are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Twenty-five, contract award Public Safety Computer Equipment Dell Marketing LP of Dallas, Texas, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Contract provides for new computers to replace the aging nine-one-one computer-aided dispatch computers. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Twenty-six, contract award Public Safety Professional Services for nine-one-one planning. MCM Consulting Group Incorporated of State College, PA, one hundred eleven thousand, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Contract provides for consultants to provide nine-one-one planning with data collection, review, and future planning services for a three-year term. Services are available through a PA State contract. Twenty-seven, contract award Public Safety Phone Line Audit Services, MCM Consulting Group Incorporated of State College, PA, forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Contract provides for an audit of the nine-one-one phone lines to determine and eliminate unused phone lines and recurring costs. Services are available through a PA State contract. Twenty-eight, contract award Share Civil Serve Process Software, Tyler Technologies Incorporated of Moran, Ohio, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and two thousand, dollars and sixty-four cents. Maintenance and support for the existing civilware software. Contract provides for annual software maintenance and support for the county's civil process automation system. Contract renewal is valid for the period of twelve-twenty-four-twenty-two through twelve-twenty-three-twenty-three. Software is proprietary. Twenty-nine, contract award Multiple Department Toxicology Services, Redwood Toxicology Laboratory Incorporated of Santa Rosa, California, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Contract provides for toxicology services and supplies for adult probation, juvenile probation treatment courts, and the Office of Children and Youth. Contract is for the term of one year beginning January one, twenty twenty-three. Contract is available through a Sourcewell Cooperative contract. Thirty, contract renewal District Courts Janitorial Services for leased District Court Buildings. Cleanet of Philadelphia of King of Prussia, PA, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, seventy dollars. Contract provides for janitorial services to include cleaning supplies for eighteen county leased District Court facilities as per RFP twenty-one twenty-eight. This is the first of four optional annual renewal terms. Thirty-one, contract renewal Human Resources Temporary Staffing Services for county offices, multiple providers. Contract provides for temporary employment agencies to provide personnel services on an as-needed basis as per RFP twenty-one twenty-three. Rates vary based on position skill levels. Skill levels include administrative, medical, and election clerk services. This is the first of four optional annual renewal terms. List of providers are at the end of the agenda and the back of the room. Thirty-two, contract award and amendment Public Safety Comcast Cable of Southeastern PA, fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Contract provides for cable and internet services for the Public Safety Emergency Operating Center for the twenty-twenty-three term. Amendment provides for additional cable and internet services required for the twenty-twenty-two term. Thirty-three, contract renewal Public Safety Language Interpretation for County Offices, Language Line Services Incorporated of Monterey, California, eighty thousand dollars. Contract provides for language interpretation and translation services for public safety in other county departments as needed as per RFP twenty-one fifty-one. This is the first of four optional annual renewals. Thirty-four, contract renewal Sheriff and Security Uniforms. McDonald Uniform Company Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, one hundred one thousand dollars. Contract provides for uniforms for the Sheriff and Security Departments as per specification six-four-five-four. This is the first of two optional annual renewal terms. Thirty-five, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure Bridge Construction Road Con Incorporated of West Chester, PA, ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. The original contract provided for the replacement of Swamp Pike Bridge, County Bridge one-six-six over unnamed tributary of Swamp Creek in New Hanover Township. The bridge will be a prefabrication concrete art bridge. Amendment provides for additional funds required to finalize construction and extend contract term through June one, twenty twenty-three. Thirty-six, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure Engineering. Michael Baker International Incorporated of Fort Washington, PA, no cost. Original contract provided for engineering, environmental permitting, and construction consultation for the rehabilitation or replacement of Perkeham Trail Bridge over Perkeham Creek in Marlborough and Upper Frederick Townships as per RFP twenty-twelve. Amendment provides for a no-cost extension of the contract through November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Please relay a notice to proceed from the county. Thirty-seven, contract amendment Planning Commission Engineering for the Ridge Pike Project and Only Associates of Philadelphia, PA, two hundred sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-two cents. Original contract provided engineering services for the construction of Ridge Pike Section B, Belvoir Road to Chemical Road in Plymouth Township. Amendment provides for final roadway plans, post-design and bidding assistance, and utility coordination. Amendment also provides for revisions to the project roadway plan and maintenance and protection of traffic plans. Thirty-eight, contract amendment Public Safety Rescue Training Props, NICE Construction Services Incorporated of Celebriel, PA, twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventeen cents. Original contract provides for onsite construction of vehicle and trench rescue training props at the Public Safety Training Campus as per specification six-four-five-two. Amendment provides for installation of concrete ramp walls and footers in the trench rescue area, installation of the chain-link safety fencing, and removal of subsurface rock material at fencing site. For ninine, there are two contracts, eighteen contract renewals, and nine amendments for Health and Human Services. Those providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
Thank you. If you would like a drink of water, you can absolutely do that. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, next, we have awards of contracts, uh, for assets and infrastructure on major construction projects.
Yes, one, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure, Skanska USA Building Incorporated of Parsippany, New Jersey, four hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and four dollars. Original contract provides for construction management services for buildings at the Eagleville Campus. Amendment provides for safety monitoring for duration of project for all three buildings, including weekly onsite inspections and regular meetings with contractors regarding contract compliance. Additional staffing costs associated with oversight of potable water pump and fire suppression pump installation for each of the three new buildings at the EOC. Pumps are required due to low available pressure to these buildings, which was unknown at time of original contract award. Additional costs as a result of toilet waste service and electrical feed replacement to project construction trailer. These costs are within existing project budget.
I will move to approve the preceding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Just to underscore that, Ms. O'Malley, these were, uh, issues that were unknown at the time of the original bid for this work.
Yes, and it is within the budgeted amount for the project.
And we're still within the budget, okay, thank you. Any other board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. Next, awards of contract for voter services.
Yes, contract award Temporary Staffing Services, Kelly Services Incorporated of King of Prussia, PA, eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-five cents. Contract provides for temporary ballot box attendance required during the twenty-twenty-two general election. Services are available through an omnia cooperative contract.
All right, I will move to approve the preceding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any board comment?
Um, Ms. O'Malley, since it came up earlier, can you just say for the record that this was not for one employee? It was for all the intended...
No, this was not, this was the entire project of the, uh, election term to, um, s- provide support to the ballot boxes that are located throughout the county, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes?
I'm a negative vote.
Okay, motion carries, two to one. Next, we have awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Yes, one, contract award Electronic Outdoor Message Boards for Montgomery County, United Rentals North America Incorporated of Conshohocken, PA, one hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. Contract provides for seven new variable message board signs to replace aging equipment in use by the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety. Equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Two, contract award Vehicle Upfit Service for Montgomery County, nine-one-one Rapid Response LLC of Anvil, PA, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and one cent. Contract provides for outfit services for the recently purchased twenty-twenty-two Ford F-150 truck, which will provide appropriate storage, emergency lights, and power adapters to increase the mission effectiveness of the biological/chemical decontamination response vehicle. Services are available through a PA State contract. Three, contract award Drone Truck Modifications for Montgomery County, ESI Equipment Incorporated of Montgomeryville, PA, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. Contract provides for modifications to an existing Montgomery County Public Safety vehicle for use as a drone response vehicle. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four, contract amendment Strategic Planning Project Management Services for Chester County. IGEN X LLC of Radnor, PA, no cost. Original contract provides for project management services for Chester County Fire and EMS Strategic Plan Steering Committee as per RFP twenty-one twenty-seven. Amendment provides for a no-cost extension of the contract to cover the period of one-sixteen twenty-twenty-three through seven-thirty-one twenty-twenty-three due to a delay of the project start.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence, any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Any closing commissioner comments? Okay. Um, if there's none, then I will announce that our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be January the fifth, two thousand twenty-three, and I will move to adjourn the December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, is there a second? of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned, and we will bring up Ms. Pardue again for Salary Board. Ms. Cofrancisco, do we have any public comment on Salary Board?
I have a public comment.
Welcome the controllers. Is it a day?
Do I count as far as public comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Then you may proceed.
Thank you. For the last 10 years, I have had the opportunity to work with so many wonderful people across the county. It has been my pleasure getting to know them, and I would like to thank them for sharing with me their expertise and their commitment to the employees and residents of Montgomery County. Most of all, I would like, I would like to request, not beg back. Most of all, I would like to thank the HR staff. Every day, they serve the people who serve the residents of Montgomery County. They are involved at each stage of an employee's career, from new hire to retirement, and at many stages of an employee's personal life, both happy and sad. As my last day approaches, I am completely confident that the county Human Resources team is the best of the best, and that they will continue to serve the employees of Montgomery County with honesty, integrity, and empathy.
Thank you. That's lovely. Thank you. All right. Whenever you are ready.
Okay. Good morning, members, or good afternoon, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is an eight-page document dated Wednesday, December 14th, 2022, with a timestamp of 10:35 a.m. Of note, we have eight retirees. Fred Antwiak from Assets and Infrastructure after 15 years. Barbara Gabrielle from Courts after 26 years. Michelle Shari from Courts after 27 years. John Salamon from the DA's Office after 17 years. Michael Shade from the DA's Office after 11 years. Nancy Siriow from Juvenile Probation after 39 years. Jesse Stumpel from Public Safety after 17 years, and Michael Bullock from Security after one year. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the December 15th, 2022 Salary Board presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same? Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Want to make any more comment?
Do you want to make it now?
Well, you can make it whenever we want.
We'll just make it.
Okay, then we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll go ahead and do the second motion and then see if there's any additional comments. Is there a motion? Do you have anything to present around the second motion? Okay, is there a motion that effective December 24th, 2022, except as restricted by statute or otherwise by Resolution 94-C.756 or Resolution 22-M.1 relating to the salaries of certain elected officials? A pay increase of 4% be granted to all qualified full-time and part-time employees. Qualified full-time and part-time employees for the purposes of this resolution excludes those employees who are members of a bargaining union, including those employees subject to a quote "status quo" requirement, elected officials, employees otherwise covered by a separate agreement or resolution, and those employees who are active in the retirement process. Is there a second?
You moved it?
I'm sorry. Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Lawrence. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. And I would just comment that this is the salary increase that is contained within the budget that we did just approve. Is there any other comments?
I just have a question to clarify. Does this have anything to do with the 2024 elected official salary increases?
It does not. That is completely separate.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right, in that case, we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Why don't we acknowledge Ms. Pardue, and then we'll do our retiree acknowledgement?
So, Ms. Pardue, why don't you come back up and be embarrassed? So, I had actually tried to get you to read all eight pages today for your last salary board meeting, but my colleague said not to do that. Donna, thank you for your years of service to the county. To me personally, when I first became a commissioner, you were the one who brought me my packet and got me. And I know you've done that for countless county employees. So, we wish you all the best, and you'll be relocating, but continuing to serve, and just thank you for all that you've done for the county and the employees.
Mr. Sotesea, do you want to say?
Donna, Donna. We both came to the county 10 years ago together, just about together, and we've certainly, in those 10 years, seen a lot together. And I am very proud to say that over those 10 years, we've certainly accomplished a lot together with your leadership and the team that you have built. We're all here as they have been for 10 years, right behind you. And you're, you're very much able to say what I think we all hope to say whenever we move on from this place or any place where that you have, looking back, you love this place better than you found it. It's been a real pleasure, and I'm grateful for our friendship and your time here, so thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Donna, it has been a pleasure to work with you. I know we've worked on, very closely, on a number of issues that have been resolved wonderfully due to your leadership. So, thank you very much, and I wish you very good luck in your next opportunity.
Thank you.
Donna, it's been nothing but a pleasure to work alongside you. When I was contacted by various county employees over the years with questions on their health insurance policy or the structure of their department, I had to come to you to answer their questions, and you were always extremely responsive and very timely, and that's a credit to your work skills, your work ethic, and your leadership role. So, you did a fantastic job. I know you'll be missed by many, and I wish you nothing but the best in your future career path and your next chapter.
Thank you. So, thank you again. I will refer back to my comments from earlier in the meeting, but it's really been a pleasure to work with you and wish you nothing but the future success.
Yes, thank you also.
Thank you. Okay, and then we have one really extraordinary. Yes, give Donna some applause there. And we have one really extraordinary retiree acknowledgement. After 39 years, Nancy Siriow with Juvenile Probation. And we've got Kathy Zalinski to deliver that acknowledgement. Ms. Kathy. Nope, not online. Okay, well, she can always come to the next meeting if she's interested. Yep. So, sorry about that. All right. In that case, then, is there a motion to adjourn the December 15th, 2022 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So, moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence, second by Controller Sanchez. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the holidays.